...
Councilmember Groves.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chambers.
I also am here.
Councilmember Salaswito.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Completing the team. Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Public support.
Discussion or changes. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Public comment. Ma'am, you got me, Terry. You gotta go second.
Dennis Kemp, 1700 Fake Drive, Lowell, Michigan. I was unable to attend the meeting on August 7th, I believe, regarding the 425 agreement. I know there's an open house tomorrow, I believe. I'd like to ask just a couple of questions here with the whole council. As I read through the proposed agreement, or let her understand exactly what it's called, mentions a couple of things. One, it says costs to improve the city sewer and water facilities is estimated at around forty million. And the seventeen and a half million is coming from the right place in ME, DC, which still leaves, my simple math, about twenty-two and a half million dollars that we're still gonna have to pay. Then as... Or somebody's gonna have to pay. And as you read through it, it says expansions of the plant are responsibility of the city. Then it says additional expansions, residential expansions, I believe by the township, are not limited, or don't have limits on them. All of that's gonna cause the water system some strain. And I'm hoping as far as the revenue sharing, that some of that revenue sharing is allocated specifically to the expansion of the sewer and water facilities, you know, make up the gap between the seventeen and a half and forty. That's my call-up question, call-up comment.
Good.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Prairie Beach, 924 Riverside Drive. Couple things, and I'll take off on about that. And I think the seventeen million is designated, and I could be wrong, was designated for the township to get the water lines out, water lines out to the, to that project and sewer lines. But in that, and I did attend that meeting, and I guess I'm a little, and I will attend tomorrow night's meeting, concerned about our potential rates just keep going up and up and up. And I know that it's been said, if nothing happens out there, we're still gonna have to do some expansion and some things to our water and sewer plant. The part that, I was hoping that some of the tax dollar that will come from that project would go towards the expansion of the water and sewer plant. And gathering from that meeting the other night certainly wasn't ruled out, but the indication from Mr. Burns was that that was not a good idea, that the water and sewer should be separate and should be self-sustaining. And I just, I just think that there's that, that tax dollar, potential tax dollar, a good share of that should go to improving the plants. And I know this is just a start, but I think all the council members need to get a total grasp on the cost, what's it gonna, where, if this happens, this is gonna happen. If this doesn't happen, this is gonna happen. All these different scenarios, because, and I'm still hounding about Riverside Drive, that last block, not getting water. And I, I know that, Mike, you had said at last to my neighbor that it would increase the rates, to do that would increase the rates twenty-five, approximately twenty-five percent. And I, is that twenty-five percent for one year? Because again, we're funding, our rates over the next six years are going up substantial to pay for Monroe and Washington, and that's a thirty-year bond, and it's, I can't remember exactly how many millions, but it's several millions of dollars. And all of a sudden, to do a hundred and ninety thousand dollars project on Riverside Drive to increase the rates by twenty-five percent, I just, I question that. And so therefore, I question a lot of the other things that are gonna go on, that potentially would go on with the project. Because I just, I don't think that the rate payers of the city of Lowell should be holding the whole bag, and it just, it just feels like that. I know that we'll, tomorrow night, hopefully, we'll learn a lot more. But, but last thing is, this week is Thursday is the kickoff to Pink Arrow, we had the showboat. Would hope that people can come and donate blood, and mammograms gonna be there, and that's this Thursday, opportunity to get your shirts, and I know that there's a resolution later tonight, and I do have wristbands for everybody if they would like, so, thank you.
Thanks, Perry.
Mark, it's 925 Hudson. I wasn't even at the meeting on the river, and I just have, I think, you know, when they said about the resident, the forty East, three residents on both sides of the river, I was just wondering if the city could find a way of getting everybody involved, because, you know, the river, Riverwalk Festival, the showboat, the businesses, you know, that's a big thing for our city, and just to put it on the hands of the people who live by the river, seems a little bit odd to me. I just think that somehow, you know, the city should be able to find a way of getting everybody involved. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Okay, no Lowell business, so Lowell's new business, number A, ordinance prosecution.
The City Council is aware Dickinson Wright serves as the city attorney for the city of Lowell in relation to general municipal matters, economic development matters, and bond financing. From time to time, the city requires legal assistance in matters pertaining to the city's police department regarding traffic tickets, misdemeanor prosecutions, and similar matters, otherwise known as ordinance prosecution work. Several of Dickinson Wright attorneys who specialized in or historically handled the city's ordinance prosecution review have recently retired or live outside of the greater Grand Rapids area. Dickinson Wright is unable to continue to provide ordinance prosecution work services for the city, and on occasion, the city needs such services performed. Bloom Sluggett is a municipal law firm that has a deep bench of attorneys who specialize in ordinance prosecution work for various cities in West Michigan. Located in Grand Rapids and familiar with local courts, judges, and ordinances, Bloom Sluggett's ordinances prosecutors come highly recommended and are uniquely qualified to provide these services for the cities as needed. Bloom Sluggett also happens to represent Lowell Charter Township as their general township council. The city and the township are sometimes adverse in the context of contract negotiations and general municipal matters, and therefore, in order for Bloom Sluggett to provide ordinance prosecution work services on behalf of the city, two things must occur. The township board must waive any conflict of interest to permit Bloom Sluggett to perform this narrow scope of work for the city, and the city council must waive any conflicts of interest and authorize an appoint Bloom Sluggett to perform ordinance prosecution work services on behalf of the city on a needed basis. The mutual waivers from the city and township would apply to ordinance prosecution work only. The township is anticipated to act at their August township board meeting if city council approves option number, consideration number two. The recommended motion is to waive any conflict of interest and to authorize an appoint Bloom Sluggett's prosecution team to perform ordinance prosecution work services on behalf of the city on an as-needed basis. So, their hourly fee is a hundred and ninety dollars an hour, our hourly fee with Dickinson Wright's, a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour, that's still significantly less than what you're gonna get for municipal attorneys on the market. The, we do in instances, we don't do a lot of ordinance prosecution work, because normally most of our stuff can just be sent over to the county prosecutor's office, however, in the last couple of years, we have had to utilize ordinance enforcement locally under the local ordinance for, I'll just say, a continuous issue. And we can utilize cost recovery possibly if needed.
And for what it's worth, I've talked to Jerry, like me, he's only one vote over there, and I've talked to Jeff Sluggett in their vote, content that it wouldn't be an issue in anything we're doing, so.
So I've been back and forth with Jeff, right on the water. What I found sitting and listening is him and Jessica really are two peas in a pod, right? They get along really, really well. They have a lot of respect for each other. And I, at first, wasn't a fan of him, but now I, I appreciate what he brings to the table.
All right, then I will make a motion to waive any conflict of interest and authorize an appoint Bloom Sluggett's prosecution team to perform ordinance prosecution work on behalf of the city on an as-needed basis. Any discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Eric, Casey, you're up. Airport, repay me.
Geez, we don't get to see him up, Casey. We're welcome to come out anytime you want. We do, but the gate's already open.
That's just for you. I can't do it.
I know you're coming. So this one, I think we can make fairly brief. I wanted to thank you guys for all of your assistance approving our application with M.D.O. for the loan to perform this work in the first place. That's gone through. We have a few pins we have to finish up there. Mike, I appreciate your time and your time with Jessica as well, working through that. So this is the formality of approving the actual quote coming in from Strasser. It is at fifty-three thousand seven eighty-five, and that's not to exceed number with sixty-three thousand and change. We're coming in about ten thousand under what we were forecasting as far as the cost to do the work. The work is chip sealing and fogging on the runway, hard surface, the paved runway out there, so a three-eighths layer of aggregate with asphalt over top of it, with asphalt over top, much like you've been seeing around the area around here. We partnered with Kent County Road Division, and this is a contractor that they also use in the area. They actually come out of Cincinnati. That's the closest, cheapest group that you can find that does this work in the area. So I partnered with Kent County, we've gone through their bid process and followed suit with them for getting the most affordable, best contractor out there. So the request today is to approve the quote for Strasser so we can get that work started, and they're ready to go here in the next couple of weeks. They're in the area, they're mobilized, so while they're here, we're gonna take advantage of their presence. So that's our goal. I'd like to just state, I think I say this a lot every time I'm here, the airport is pretty much self-funded, we don't pull any money from the general fund, this is all revenue generated by the tenants and the pilots and the businesses out there at the airport, so we're proud of that fact.
You're at capacity out there, right?
What's that?
At capacity out there.
We are, yes. So that's the next thing, once we pay off this M.D.O. loan, we'll probably turn right around and request a new loan from M.D.O. for hangars at the next point to add capacity.
That's a good problem to have.
It is a good problem.
Yep. Any questions for Casey?
I have one. I'm just with roads, I'm familiar with getting three quotes, and I'm, so I'm not familiar with this process through the road commission, but it's like local requires.
So Kent County Road Commission did all the quoting process, so this is the only contractor really in the area that can do this type of work through their quoting process, so we follow suit with them.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? All right, and I will make a motion that we approve the airport contract with Strasser for fifty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars for the main runway.
Councilboard.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Salaswito.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. All right, this one's mine. So the Lowell High School sports teams have initiated a cancer awareness and fundraising event called Lowell Pink Arrow Pride Day. This year, we're gonna hold it on Friday, the thirteenth. Sure?
So, changing it up a little bit. Soccer's, it's gonna, the school athletic director wants it to be a three-day event, so it will be, soccer will be on Wednesday night, volleyball tentatively will be on Thursday, and that will be located at the, they're shooting to have that at the soccer field with the portable court, and then Friday will be the football game, and that will be against Coopersville.
And are they, can they, do you know, I don't know if you even know, are they able to use their shirts for?
Their shirt for all three events.
That's awesome. That's a great idea. So the players are gonna wear pink jerseys, the shirts you're gonna buy on Thursday are gonna be your ticket in the game, funds will be used for Guild's Club of Lowell and Lowell Community Wellness for Pink Arrow Family Support. So, whereas many have been afflicted and battling cancer, and breast cancer in particular, and whereas the Lowell High School football team, volleyball team, and soccer team will once again compete this disease, compete against this disease, with each player wearing pink for games on Wednesday, September 11th, Thursday, September 12th, and Friday, September 13th. And whereas the Lowell community is encouraged to buy and wear Pink Arrow Force Seventeen t-shirts to support Guild's Club, Lowell Community Wellness for Pink Arrow Family Support, the Dr. Don Gerard Medical Scholarship, and the Kathy Tallis Scholarship, now therefore be it resolved that the Lowell City Council will recognize Friday, September 13th, 2024 as Pink Arrow Pride Day, Arrow Force Seventeen, and further encourage all Lowell community residents to participate in this event by purchasing pink t-shirts and attending the game. Motion for Resolution Seventeen Twenty-Four, supporting that proclamation.
I will make that sport.
I'll second. Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito.
Yes.
Eric, Boarding Commission reports.
The Lara Trail is on schedule with one pickup. The Eagle has designated that area as the most severe wetlands, as I mentioned a few meetings ago. They're asking for an additional two hundred thousand in fees because of this sensitivity. That's out of the budget of the Lara Group, and we have gone back to the M.D.O., and they have replied that they're willing to work with us, they wish this trail to continue, and they're, and it's, it's an M.D.O. program and an M.D.O. grant that's funding the majority of this trail. They said they're willing to work with us, but it's still in negotiations, that two hundred thousand. We're still on plans for the paperwork finished this week, this year, and construction next year, calendar year. That's it.
All right, Jeff.
That was brought to my attention that several people at Lowell Light Power were celebrating a special anniversaries, about Megan and Nancy, each ten years, apparently they've been there ten years already, Casey's six years.
Already?
Already, yeah. And Tom's celebrating his second anniversary, this time it's eight years versus thirty-one years, something like that, right Perry? Yeah. There was, there was something that was brought to, to my attention, and that had to do from Ryan Teague about that, he felt that there were some construction issues at Maine and Washington from the contractor, and not working as well as they did when they did in Monroe on some issues. So I think he was gonna reach out to Rich to discuss those, which he probably did, so hopefully that happens. And another thing that came up when we're doing Riverside, I said it's such a pretty drive-along, there is there anything that we can look at considering changing on some of the street lighting, to the poles versus the poles that are a bro hive of the street lighting, so, okay. So I brought it to that attention, and we'll talk about it later, might give you a handle, see what we got. Something like that. That's it.
All right. Eric G.
Parks and Rec meets tomorrow. There is an opening on Chambers, if anybody is a Chamber member and would like to be involved with Chamber of Commerce. I've been on Chamber of Commerce since I got involved with the city council, and it's super nice to be involved in the city happening, to have your hands on a project. I think it is a place where you can really be collaborative with your community members and just be part of something, and I think, I think it happens a lot, but once you get involved in a project with the Chamber, it's hard to walk away from the next project. So they will hook line and sinker, yeah, but it's a good place to be, with good people. As far as parks, the only thing that I can predict for tomorrow is the skate park reopening. We're looking at August 31st as a tentative grand reopening party, so look for more details on, there is a skate park Facebook page, but perhaps we can put something out once we also know that. And that's it.
So Planning Commission, I wasn't there, I was kinda tied up at the township at that meeting, so.
I was a missed fire authority, so I don't have any. Any questions, comments, concerns on budget or monthly reports from your back? You're up. Manager report.
Okay, a couple, I'm gonna answer one question from public comments. If we did the work on Riverside, it's fourteen percent increase in addition to the nine percent projected, so it'd be twenty-three percent. And if you're, anyone would like to see how we got those numbers, I'd be happy to sit down and show them to you. It's all about the spreadsheet, I can very easily show you how we got there. Covenant Park, obviously, we have the open houses tomorrow and Wednesday. Paying for the facilities is obviously a concern, and it's a concern to make sure we're properly allocating costs specifically to where they need to go. So please come ask your questions. There's still a lot of moving parts, but we are very aware of the issue, and we're trying, we're, we're trying to work through it. I am still trying to get additional grant funding. I have met recently with the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission, I am submitting an preliminary application to the United States Economic Development Administration for two and a half million dollars for the water or wastewater facility. I am also, I, we'll also be meeting with Senator Peters' office here shortly to, to see if they can assist us. I've had conversations with Representative Johnson about state money being allocated to help us offset the cost for the, for the upgrades to the facility. Please come to the meeting. The questions and answers from the last meeting are up on the city's website and the township's website. As we continue to get more questions, we're gonna continue to update that website so people have the answers they're looking for, or at least have the answers, they may not accept them, but at least have the answers. Election, we have Washington Street, so we are tentatively set for Maine and Washington to reopen on the 30th of August. All of the work done by the city is done. The, the issue is AT&amp;T, they found some communication lines and boxes in the ground from the nineteen fifties that they had no record that they were even there, and so they are working on correcting that. We were told last week that they plan on pouring concrete this week, it's a seven-day cure period after the, after the pouring, so I will, I'm hoping to get another update tomorrow. Obviously, I was tied up with Middleville today, so I didn't get any updates as to where we're at, but tentatively for the 30th. And then the election, we had the election two weeks, just under two weeks ago, it's sixty-two people for early voting.
Total?
Total. And then we had an interesting day on Election Day, we had the gas leak where we almost had to evacuate voting and blew it to another site, so something Susie and I talked about is start having a Plan B and a Plan C in case emergencies happen. We've tended, we've had some issues on Election Day the last couple times, we need to have a plan just in case, so that's all I have.
All right, any questions? All right, so let me go to appointments real quick. We had the two resignations, Susie, but both of the currently serving's can be reappointed.
Yes.
So we can reappoint both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Then we'll just ask, so we have a construction board of appeals, if anybody is interested. How many times have they met?
Three.
So what did I, sorry. Constructive once in eleven years.
Yeah.
Constructive once in eleven years.
Yeah, so if you can spare the time, then really cool.
I mean, we're just playing with.
DDA, that Martha's is an at-large spot, so for that DDA spot, it doesn't have to be a downtown business owner, you don't have to live in the DDA, you just have to have a vested interest in the city of Lowell, which, as you know, is a very broad term, so it can be manipulated. That meeting comes with lunch, so keep that in mind.
Well, I'm trying to get people's.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Council comments, Eric G.
The only thing I was gonna say was, I'm sorry, I missed Middleville today, work did not allow me to skip out. And then the other thing I was gonna mention was your comment on the river, and I don't know if I can speak for everyone, but I can definitely speak for myself when I say, it's not that we don't want to be involved. I would definitely, as a citizen myself, I would love to be involved. I think the ask is to have the city organized well, and I just don't think that's within our capacity. And so I, I want to be very clear that it's not that we're not interested in making the river the best it can be, and even being part of those conversations, but for me, it's about, if everyone's involved, what does that look like to organize it, right? Who, who is going to put their, put their foot forward and start organizing that and building that bridge? And I don't know who that is. I know for myself, I, I cannot take that on, but I just wanna be clear that I don't think it's that we're not interested and that we don't not care. It's, it's that, as a city, it's not within our capacity to organize it. To be involved, yes, to organize, no.
Cities do not subsidize river cleanups.
Correct.
Very few cities do.
Yeah, I'm not even talking about financial, I'm, I'm talking about personal interest, time, energy.
Oh, you won't be last. Okay. Eric. Oh, sorry, you're the?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I was done. I was done.
Eric.
I thoroughly enjoyed the Middleville visits both last week and today. I learned a lot, we make very similar cities, communities, we have a lot of the same issues and facilities, so it was full days, both days, but it was really time well spent, so thank whoever paired us up, that was great. Thank you, and I'd like to recognize Chief Hurst for something. I, I looked through the spending reports, and I noticed that he recently took some training, and, and he explained that training to me, and his lunch was, was twenty dollars, and I just want to add that very.
Two days.
Two, two days, twenty dollars, and I, I just thought that was amazing, very, very, I know he's always been careful with his budgets and money, and that just shows you, even with the company card, he's very careful, so thank you for doing that. And I also agree on, we're, all of us are concerned, Dennis and Perry, with the, the development, we're, we're learning, as, as all of us are learning, we'll learn more tomorrow night, and we'll try to do the best for the residents and the city as we move forward on this 425 agreement, so. But we're learning, just as you are, we don't have the answers, or we don't have any biases, we're just looking out to do best for you and the city. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Yep.
In regarding the people from Middleville, when we were on the boat today, they looked at the river, and they thought, what an asset that, that we have in, in our community, the walk, everything like that, so it was nice that, that they noticed that they, I think they're very appreciative of what Lowell has to offer the communities and our residents and stuff like that, parts of that, that was really, really good, and that's all I got.
Okay, I have a couple of things, and then I'll let Marty go. Middleville is, my mom's lived out there for a long time, so I went in expecting to learn nothing, and the opposite of that happened. They have, much like we do, a lot of things that have value, but they don't broadcast them, they don't have billboards up that say, cool, look at these water reservoirs, you know what I mean? So it was impressive to be out there, they have a lot of similar things to us, but when they came here, they were blown away by how far along, one of them said to me, everything you guys do makes it a more welcoming and walkable community. And that meant... And that meant a lot to me because the social district, the showboat is hot button. How much taxpayer money was used on that, Jim?
Actually, I think zero.
Correct, zero.
To date?
Sorry, Cliff's not here anymore, so that's yours.
But would we like some? Yes.
He's a really good grant writer, he's a really good grant writer, just use some of this stuff. Um, our downtown is full, theirs is not. So they, they were impressed, I was impressed with, we were all impressed with what they're doing. I honestly would like to do it again because I feel like we ran out of time there and they ran out of time here. So it's really cool, they were super impressed by the museum. But they said, when we were standing in the, what's the top of the showboat called? Yeah, that's it. Looking down the river, we had this problem too. And they said, everybody wants us to pay for it and we just can't do it. So even the problems are similar, as are the benefits.
Picture in the museum? Shows the river just like this?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a picture in the museum and it doesn't look that different, but when you get down, no pun intended, into the weeds, it's, it's got some stuff. So, uh, I'm grateful for all that. On the river, I wanna echo what Leah said, don't view our lack of commitment as lack of desire. It's just not in our purview. It is in our purview to help people in any way we can. It is not in our purview to take it onto our, our plate and make it our responsibility. So we are as passionate as you are, even if sometimes sitting up here it doesn't appear that way. Your turn, do what you do.
Okay. Uh, first off, uh, Middleville, awesome people. They have very similar problems, they're a village or a city. Today we had them here and we got to showcase what we are. Chadon blew them away, right? And how clean every one of our facilities was. It's not like, oh, Middleville's coming and we gotta clean. No, they noticed that everything was spick and span before. They were more impressed with the way all of our departments act as one. We work for Lowell, we live in Lowell, and everything we do is for this community. And a good example of that is the ladies and gentlemen at Light and Power. They can go to the big companies and make a whole lot more money, but they choose to be here because we are a family. We're a community family that helps each other. The mayor, uh, if you get a minute, congratulate Mike. The mayor had to leave, uh, Middleville. He had an appointment at his home. He is now, uh, a, yes, hosting a child from overseas. And this is huge. Uh, in fact, it's so big, uh, he informed me today that he will not be going to Mackinac because, uh, this is just a little bit more important. So congratulating him on that, that's a huge hurdle to go through. Uh, and he was a little nervous when he left, but he made her through. Middleville gave us this plaque. Uh, their, uh, city, or their village president and I, we exchanged, um, and it was good. Today we did similar things, Mike had to leave early because again, he has his exchange student and felt that was more important to be with today. He did stick her until noon, lunch. And we did have the boys. We had them here and they got to be chief, um, and they were very excited. So that was fun. We gave them a plaque, uh, different companies, uh, gave gifts just like they kinda gave to us. All in all, it is very interesting to, I've done some of these and Middleville's probably the closest to us, you wouldn't think that, but they have a lot of similar things. And they face an almost mirrored image of the problems that we face going forward. So, they are currently trying to resolve an issue with their township, so they're paying very close attention to how we deal with our township, right? Because they feel it's a good learning experience. With that, the next thing I wanted to talk about is.
Hit a couple more mayor exchange things before you go.
Yeah.
On the last thing. This reminded me, so they're also, right now, in talks to become the first municipality outside of county line in the KDL. So they're discussing bringing in a library for their residents. And when they toured ours, does it have to be this fancy and say, no, you tailor, um, to whatever you want? So, you forget what a valuable asset that is until you go in there and you have someone tell you what it is. You know, during COVID, their interactions actually were up when everybody else's were down. They don't do books, they do books, magazines, DVDs, hotspots, um, anything that can help the community that they're able to do. They have blood pressure cuffs that you can rent, like if you're on council and Perry's gonna be up for public comment, you put the cuff on, run it, take it back to the library. So they do so much more than just books and what, I mean, it was a benefit for Middleville, sure, but what a good reminder for all of us that we don't talk about what an asset that library is enough. And the other thing that they were blown away by, and then I'll stop.
Okay.
They asked us when we were walking the Riverwalk, how much extra in police and EPW do you pay to police and clean up the social district? And we said, nah, uh, don't. What about the issues? I don't really talk about, right? We've had minimal, if any, issues. So that was cool to brag on the fact that the people who care about and use the social district take care of the people who don't wanna do that, so they never make it to us. And that says a lot about what value people hold in what we're offering for them. Because for us, that social district was minimal work. You file an application, you send in a check, you get the businesses bought in and they came to us basically before we were even done, right? So what an asset we can provide just by signing a check and letting you guys see the value in it and maintain the value in it. So that was, I thought, the best compliment we were paid was you have a community that can support something like this and just follow the rules a little bit. So, that's all I remember, go ahead.
Okay, so my next part is Riverside Drive and I'd like to take some time to hear me out. Lowell's first look approached me and said, well, then you, you said you wouldn't do a road without doing the infrastructure. And I still haven't found that on tape yet. So do you have that, can you please send that to me? When that, when that comment was made, we.
Well, you guys have mentioned that multiple meetings.
Yeah.
Like that was the whole thing with the SAW grant was that we're not gonna do the street work because we need to figure out what the infrastructure is.
What I'm getting at is I still haven't found where we, where that was discussed in our.
Marty, when we talked about that, we were talking about every street. And where you had made a comment, we did as a board, that we won't tear up a road unless we also look at the infrastructure as well. So I have a think was that.
Well, you're, if you're talking about that.
Look at, right, exactly, I understand. So there was something we won't do.
So I get, yup, that's different than.
So that's clarified, yup.
Yes, and if there's a torn line, I'm sorry, if there's a torn up line, that's when we're gonna fix it. If there's no line or there's no need to address the line, we're not gonna, we're not gonna address it.
Right, so we direct Mike to constantly look for this funding to do all of this. And it's becoming quite obvious that, uh, some of the residents up there aren't very happy. I think you went and talked to somebody.
I still need to do that.
Okay. And my proposal is, until we find the funding to take those eight homes and loop them into the system and do this correctly, because I do feel, we only need to tear that road up once, right? So let's just pull it from its scheduled time until we can find the money. Then we can put it back on to get it done. If it takes another year, then I'm sorry, but that's what it's gonna take. But I promise you, we, we will direct Mike to try to find the money so we can do that. It's not cheap, it was like a hundred and.
Hundred ninety thousand.
Hundred ninety thousand to do that loop. So, that's kinda what I wanted to talk to us as a group about, right? I, I think we should just stop, let Mike continue on what that timeline is. I really don't know, I would like to think it's gonna be a speedy timeline. But then we're moving forward and we're doing, we're only tearing a road up once and we're gonna, we're gonna fix the problem up there that the residents may or may not have, I don't know. Right? But that's kinda where I sit and I would like some, one of your input.
You wanna begin first?
Sure.
I, um, I think it was important the way June clarified it because look at infrastructure is different than fix something that doesn't need fixing. I also think if you, like, if Riverside Drive comes to us and says, yeah, postpone it till my neighbors can get what they want. Great, but why are we, aren't we spiting an entire street for, how many residents is it?
Eight, it's eight residential units for the, uh, if you were to loop that line, so.
Is there, was there any?
No, 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 here, this is the, I, this is the other thing I was gonna clarify at the end. So let me finish with you and then I have another council comment that I also forgot about. So that's what I'm saying is, I, listen, if, they want that, but I don't wanna make three blocks of a street mad for eight residents, just because they're more vocal than the residents who are.
Yeah, but good conscience, I can't see doing the work and then Mike say, oh, we, we got the money now and we go back and we tear a street up because past is shown, it never works well.
No, but what I'm saying is, it doesn't need it now.
But part of Riverside does.
Yeah, you could go up to that spot, you could go and do Riverside up to that spot.
Oh, I'd be all for that.
That you could do that.
I'd be a hundred percent for that.
And then, the only issue is, is that, just, just understand, that funding is not our capital plan. So if we get, let's just say we save ten, you know, let's just say we save ten thousand dollars a year on that, that's in ten years, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And then in ten more years, the bond reserve, which is about ninety thousand dollars, it'll be in reserve as part of Monroe and Washington, that'll become free. So unless you wanna, I mean, we can always look at the, we can look at the five-year capital list again, but if you wanna move projects around, we can do that too. So there's a lot of different things you can do, but as, but that is right now is not a capital list.
Right, but what I'm saying, Marty's saying is, we look for funding. If we find funding tomorrow, great, but if it takes X amount of years, that's an assumed risk, right? That's what you're saying. So yeah, I'm all for it. If, if it's that, it, I don't know the need, I don't understand the looping, I don't. If it's that big of a need, then let's do Riverside up to the problem and then when we come up with the money. But I want people to be crystal clear that we are not putting a timeframe on them.
Yeah.
Right, cuz I don't think you can because.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's one of those crystal ball questions.
I don't wanna get into an over committal situation.
A lot of communities, when they do these loop line, they do it for special assessment.
Yeah.
They just, those people have.
And if they get tired of waiting, that's always an option too, right? So, listen, I'm all for it, I don't wanna take up all the time, but if you guys have thoughts, but I'm all for what you're saying.
Okay.
I think it needs to be done and I'm not, I can sit here and talk about a good conscience all day long. There's so many things I would like to do for so many residents in Lowell with a good conscience that I just can't do. If there's a need, you fulfill it with the money that's available in Plan Four right now. If you waited for the whole street, it's only going to get more expensive. I am not in favor of waiting to do that whole street. So if we wanna fix it up to where the need stops, fix it. If we want to keep looking for funds, of course, we should always be looking for funds. But as far as putting the entire project up hold, I think that would be a mistake.
I agree. Yep. Eric?
I agree with Leah, that Riverside, especially the beginning of it, is atrocious. I, we need to, we need to pave that as soon as possible. I would keep looking for funding, I agree with that. Uh, I am concerned, I believe Rob, Rob Newman, I believe when he says that he saw chunks, uh, coming up through the vacuum, I haven't had a chance to ask Mr. Burns or Rich about checking the tile.
Sounds like that's a storm sewer perp issue or a sewer issue, which is not what, a water line, so they are different. But I, I have, yeah, I'd have to get more information from Rich. But that, when I hear Chuck, Rob's, Chuck's coming out, that is normally not a water line.
Yeah, I, I think it would be sewer, a broken sewer, and if there's a way that we can bring in plumbers and check that, I, I would hate to have broken sewer lines. Um, I don't know what that costs, but I'd, I'd like us to at least pull the lid off that.
Yeah, and they have, I know that, I mean, Rich was supposed to get back to me and I know they haven't had any documented, I do have some paperwork in my office that didn't verify it as an issue, but Rich was still putting that information together for me. And I can share it once I have it.
Yeah, my take on the, the, the water is that, at my house, I can probably pour a gallon out of my faucet within fifteen seconds. If it's a trickle and it takes two and a half, three minutes to get a gallon of water, yet I'm paying the same rate as I am and he has to wait that long, I don't know if that is a hundred percent fair. So what I was gonna go is check it. When they say there's a trickle, what does that mean? It's a trickle of water, but Mike, you said it might be a different pressure issue versus something, something else.
It could be a pressure issue, it could be a lateral line that isn't big enough. A lot of times from my, from my understanding is that it is a lateral line. Lateral lines are not the responsibility of the city, except for lead line removal. That is responsibility of the homeowner. I believe it's a six-inch line going up Washington, so pressure shouldn't be an issue. I don't believe that's a four-inch line, but I will, I will verify that. If it's a four-inch line, then, then it's something that eventually if we were ever to repave Hudson again, that would be the time to do it. But I don't believe that's a four-inch line, I believe it's a six or an eight, so I will verify. And if it's six or an eight, then, then pressure isn't the issue, it's probably something.
So it looks like we, we need to look to make sure what we're really talking about before we go ahead.
Right.
Just to confirm, you know, like we, we talked about.
Yeah, if it's a homeowner problem, then I'm no longer in favor of delaying any part of the project.
Right, exactly, so, so how do we figure that out in the meantime between now and whenever that might happen? If I agree that we go to Point A and then figure it out when, when we get to a hundred ninety thousand dollars? But the one ninety is gonna do what, like just put in new, new line?
All we're doing, all that is, is to loop the line.
Line, yup.
All it is.
Not connected, how's it?
They already have connectivity. It's a new, but it, I mean, I would agree, it's a better connectivity, but they already have service. If they didn't have service, that would be a whole different conversation. Or if the line, or if the line, really if the line was deteriorated, that's a whole different conversation. That's where you don't wanna pave the streets five years later.
Right.
That's where you don't want it.
Or if we get there and we find out that our lead lines, then we would pick up that cost to replace it.
Right, it's like, we have twenty years to.
Right, exactly, so.
But I guess if, if, the feeling is to just go to the problem area and stop and continue on to find the, the funding, then I guess I'll be good with that.
It's, that probably two blocks, Perry?
One block.
One block, the nine hundred block? That's where all this issue is, just the nine hundred.
Between, yup.
Because it'll be, you know, the hundred ninety to fix it and then whatever the asphalt and time and material costs, right? Cuz it'll T and M you on that little bit.
Well, the, the one ninety is my estimate with engineering, so.
So yeah, if you, if that's where you guys wanna proceed, I am perfectly good with it, but I just felt we've been hearing a lot about it and we needed to just take a hot minute and have a little quick discussion on the direction, right? Really, I.